All right, so we'll get this meeting going. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the City of Everett Planning Commission Meeting. This is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Beck.
Here.
Commissioner LaVera.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Thank you. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the minutes? Is there any changes? Does anybody have any comments on the minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVera?
Yes.
Chair Beck?
Yes.
All right, so we'll just go down the line here. Commissioner Lark, do you have any reports?
Nothing to report, but I am curious if the Chair will allow me to read a quick, prepared statement I have in response to some comments from last meeting, if that's appropriate at this moment.
Sure.
All right, thank you. I just want to take a moment to address some concerns raised last meeting around conflicts of interest. My job for Housing Hope, I am a fundraiser, and while it involves engaging with donors throughout Snohomish County, it has mainly focused on communities, community relations, and housing projects in North Snohomish County, Marysville in North, and East Snohomish County, the city of Snohomish, and East. While I was not attached to the Everett School District project, it became clear that this project would become a larger conversation. And on June 24th, I took an added step to formally recuse myself from any internal deliberations for Housing Hope, and contacted the city attorney in regards to what my ethical left and right limits were as a planning commissioner, and have been following the guidance given to me through email that I received on June 25th from the city attorney's office. Other than that, I want to say that, you know, more than employment, my guiding principles are structured around long-held beliefs that I have about urbanism, ensuring that cities are for all people, my policy experience that comes from working in Capitol Hill and in Congress, and my passion for building successful and productive urban spaces. These principles have me running both parallel and contrasting schools of thought with all sides involved. Ultimately, these form the core, a foundation of my belief, and create the basis for the intellectual framework I use to analyze all issues that come before the planning commission. I'd like to thank the Chair for allowing me to put that in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finch?
No update.
Nothing to report?
No, nothing.
No report.
Nothing.
No report.
And no report from me. All right, staff comments?
Only comment is that we will be meeting again in two weeks on the 17th. I don't remember the topics. I think one of them has to do with the Supportive Housing Code Amendment referred by the city council, but can't remember the other. Probably something to do with rethings zoning, but since my right-hand man is not here to keep me in line and remind me what the subject matter is for that meeting, I'll just leave it at that.
Is it a possibility that it could be a public hearing the 17th, or is that too soon?
It will not be a public hearing for the Supportive Housing Code Amendments. It'll be another public workshop.
Okay, thank you. All right, if at this time, if anybody would like to speak to the planning commission on anything that's not on the agenda, please feel free to come up to the podium. I haven't received any requests, but, all right, I don't see anyone, so we'll move along to item number one, the Climate Action Plan. And I understand we have a councilperson that will be speaking to this?
I'm not accustomed to being on this side of the dais, but I'm going to do my very best. I'm Paul Roberts. I'm a member of the city council and was the sponsor of the resolution asking you all to take a look at climate action plans. It's really an honor to be here, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank you for the service that you provide to the city from the planning commission perspective. So, my most sincere thanks to you and the good work you do. So, we passed a resolution, I'm going to come back to that, but I do want to say, I wear a couple of other hats, and I think it's important that I share those with you, one of which is I chair the Pudesstown Clean Air Agency Board of Directors. And the issue of climate and responding to climate has been a part of our core mission and strategic plan for at least 10 years. It's probably worth noting that we have accelerated that work, and I'll come back to that in a moment. Another hat I wear is I serve on the Sound Transit Board, and the integration of transportation and land use is a central theme that is now coming forward in even more dramatic fashion as we look at how to respond to a changing climate. And I serve at the Pudesstown Regional Council Transportation Policy Board. So, in my day job, and I still have one, having failed at retiring, I represent the Association of Washington Cities in developing sustainability, and we published, I authored and published on their behalf, a study earlier this year, which we kind of technically call, I call it economics, but the technical title is "Growing the Green Economy in Washington State," and looks specifically at the core business groupings, they're really not technically sectors, but they're business groupings of energy, water, agriculture and forestry, and building materials, and looking at how the green economy might be developed in this state. Those are areas that we felt the state was rich in technology and capability, and the study did affirm that. I wanted to, wearing that hat, I want to just report that in the last few months, I've been going back over a number of what are called the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, and a number of you are familiar with the IPCC, but that's, that work, and they produced a report in October of last year, so it's just not quite one year old. And that report takes a look in some depth at what it would take to reach a 1.5 degrees Celsius target, and they really have a lot of discussion between 1 and 2 degrees Celsius. But the bottom line in that report, if I can fairly summarize hundreds and hundreds of pages in a couple of sentences, is that we need to be moving with all expeditious capability, with all deliberate speed, to address mitigation, adaptation, and developing an economic framework that would respond to sustainability, and disinvest, and move away from fossil fuels. It is, it is very serious work, and it needs to be done with expedition. And so, what we have done tonight, then I want to come to the resolution, is the council passed Resolution 7359. You have that with you. I'm not going to read the resolution to you, you have it, but I do want to emphasize that we were very deliberate in putting in the resolution a summary of the legislation that was already before the Washington State Legislature at the time we drafted it. And that includes establish a goal of 100% renewable energy by 2045, support zero emission vehicles and electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and support low-carbon fuel standards, improve building efficiencies, and link emergency management plans with adaptation measures. Now, you will hear, I'm sure, as we go forward tonight from the consultants, we're very excited to have a great consulting group, and I'm going to let them tell you about the work that they're doing. But before I do, I want to both say that this is a limited-scope work. It's a small contract, but it's important to recognize it's a small contract as an important next step in work that has already been done by the city. Beginning in 2011, we worked with ICLI to address a climate action approach. The comp plan included a climate element in 2015. The carbon wedge analysis was done in 2016, and by the way, that carbon wedge analysis is the same one, the same structure that exists with the King County and its cities. Snohomish County has adopted it as well. So, we are now reaching out to the Pudesstown Regional Council, and you'll hear later tonight about Vision 2050. We have asked them to include a standalone climate element, and that to the carbon wedge analysis that is now generally accepted in a number of cities and counties in the Pudesstown region, we are asking that there be a uniform means of measuring and managing carbon. As the Clean, wearing the hat of the Clean Air Agency, if we don't have a uniform way of measuring, we won't have a uniform way of managing carbon. And so, it's very important, to the credit of PSRC, they have agreed to do a standalone climate package, and I believe that element will be included within it. And then, tonight, we opened the door to the update for a climate action plan. And that, as you will hear, will address mitigation, which would be the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, adaptation, which is responding to the issues that will be visited upon us by changing weather and patterns, sea level, and so on, so forth, increased risk of fires, and so on, and then developing the green economy. That last point, I must emphasize, we have the largest manufacturing center in the state of Washington with high capability for high-tech manufacturing. And our study with the Association of Cities found that water and energy were huge opportunities, particularly creating efficiencies for the delivery of water and energy. There were huge opportunities there that we think might work well in our community. So, we're building on existing sources. You'll hear some of that tonight. I'm not going to drone on about them, but I think many of you are aware of some of those sources. We're also building with the region, so we're in a region of 4 million, we're 110,000. We may bat above our weight and punch above our weight in terms of the economic impact, but we're still a player in a region. And so, when we talk about electric vehicle technology or integration of systems, we're a part of something, we're a big part in terms of, as a purveyor of water. And so, I end by saying, there's a couple of things that I bring to you tonight, in addition to thanking you for the work, and on behalf of the city council, thanking you, and we look forward to what you will tell us. But the question I hear as often as any from the community is, okay, what can we do? What can we do to address these issues? And I know we've asked our consultant team to help us develop just what that menu might look like. And then, last but not least, this issue will be with us for the rest of our lives. So, the key, in my judgment, is create, create the right platform for this work. We'll be smarter tomorrow than we are today, but if we can get the platform correct with the adaptation, mitigation, and green economy, I think that will be a good framework, and that's, those are precisely the things that we've asked the Pudesstown Regional Council. So, I want to thank you again. I'm happy to answer questions, but I'm just as happy to turn this over to our experts, but I am here to answer any questions if you have them.
Does anybody have any questions at this time that you'd like to ask? Councilperson Roberts?
Well, thank you very much for your service. I look forward to hearing the discussion.
Thank you.
So, Karen Stewart, Environmental Planner with the Planning Division. I have the privilege of being one of the co-leads for the city for this consulting contract, and we're aggressively working, pulling a document together, hopefully by the end of the year. And I know the planning commission has quite a few other major things that you're working on, but as Councilman Roberts already let us know, this is a real crucial next step in beginning to pull together some of the actions that individuals in the city, as well as the city, can and should be taking over the next 10 years or earlier, hopefully. So, I do want to introduce my co-lead, in case you haven't met Bob Bowlerjack before. He's an executive director and works closely with the mayor and others in our administration. So, together, we're working with a consultant and trying to pull together our best thoughts to put together a draft for you, which you'll see in mid-October. We'll go over the schedule in a little bit in the presentation. So, just wanted to introduce that. Any questions right now? So, tonight will be the initial briefing. You'll notice that we do have a number of folks in the audience. I've already taken the initiative to go out and speak to a couple of our local groups who I know are very interested in this particular topic, and I asked them to come tonight, and I'm very pleased people have taken the time to come. And I let them know that we will have a workshop in mid-October, when we'll have some draft materials that people can respond to. But you might think of tonight, in addition to just an overall briefing from the consultant, it's an opportunity to start brainstorming a little bit on some of the actual actions that you would like to see in the draft plan that will come before you. So, kind of a couple little steps there. And then, it's an opportunity for people in the public who are attending tonight to share with you some of their good thoughts on what some of those actions might be, too. So, okay, Bob, did you want to say anything? Okay. I would like to introduce PJ Tillman, who's with Cascadia Consulting Firm, and she's here tonight to do a short presentation and start this conversation.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, everyone. How are you doing?
Good.
Good. Nice to see you all here. So, my name's PJ Tillman. I work with Cascadia Consulting Group. We are based in Seattle, but we work all over the Northwest and across the country to support cities and counties of all sizes in their efforts to take action on climate change and other natural resource issues. I also happen to live in South Snohomish County, so it's nice to have a project in, or in the county I live in. So, also on my team, but not here tonight, are Britten Richardson. She's our lead analyst and researcher, and you're likely to see her at a future meeting, presenting on some of the aspects that we'll be working on the next several weeks. We also have a range of graphic designers, other research and strategic advisors that help us pull together quality plans for, that are tailored to whomever we're working with. I'm excited to be supporting this plan with you all, and excited to join you at a time where you're really transitioning from having actions and strategies and disparate plans, and bringing them all together, and then adding in the community element to move the climate action planning process forward. As Councilman Roberts alluded to, there is a lot of action at the city, regional, and state level around climate change right now. We're prepared to bring together the best and most applicable of those efforts to develop the Climate Action Plan for Everett. We really want this to be inclusive, your key priorities, actions, and communities, and be that foundation and roadmap that you really need to get things started. So, yeah, as I mentioned, we're looking at a, providing a foundation for long-term climate resilience planning, and really, this is, this really is the, is the start of the process. There is a lot of information out there, we're trying to pull it together, so we can give you a roadmap and menu of climate action options that the city council can then prioritize going forward. That process includes synthesizing your existing sustainability efforts, best available science, and community input, to identify greenhouse gas emissions reductions targets that are bold yet achievable, and to identify strategies and initial actions to get you moving toward those targets. It also includes ensuring that the Climate Action Plan captures the community's key priorities and concerns. We'll start that process today by some input on a vision for what a resilient effort looks like, and an opportunity to solicit both your input and the public's input as appropriate today and going forward at the future meetings on the various elements that are ready at that time. Also, as Councilman Roberts alluded to, we really are at the start of a cohesive process and a continuation of the process that's been ongoing within the city for almost a decade now. And as the start of the process, we really wanted to focus it now, and given the short timeline and the, and the small contract that we're working on, we are focusing this on reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the four sectors that are seen to have the best current opportunities for getting you the farthest toward your, toward your goals. And those sectors are transportation, electrification of the energy grid, and a transition away from natural gas, supporting the green economy, and supporting compact multimodal land use. We also want to bring in community actions, and in climate action planning, there's typically a distinction between municipal actions or actions the city government takes within their own operations, and then what are termed community actions, which is essentially what everyone else does or supports. And so, we are focused a bit more on that community side, because there already has been some done work at the municipal level. So, we'll pull together the municipal work, and then add in what the community could do for both individuals and businesses, and how the city can support it. As a platform and a roadmap for future work, we're really looking for this to be more strategic than tactical. So, in the draft document that's coming in mid-October, you're likely to see more strategies than specific actions. So, we want to provide the roadmap so that you all can decide what to prioritize and what, what to do first from there. So, I alluded to the aggressive timeline, and so here's just a brief overview of the timeline. We're right now in the middle of our literature review, and we'll start to draft the actual planning document in the next week or two. We'll be using your input today to inform the vision for the planning document, to generate ideas for strategies to include in the plan, and to gain an understanding of the key obstacles to plan for at this stage. We're planning to come back to you on October 15th to present the draft Climate Action Plan, and to seek your input and the public's input on the emissions reductions targets that we've identified, and the proposed strategies and actions. We're envisioning a workshop-style event for that October 15th meeting with a short presentation, and a large few materials that everyone can, can take a look at. We can include time to speak one-on-one with the project team, should that be of interest. And like today, we're also planning for a traditional Q and A for the benefit of those tuning in remotely, and those who watch the recording later on. After October 15th, we'll use your input and any public input we've received to revise the draft document, and then return on December 3rd to present that revised document and be present for the public hearing that's scheduled for that time. We would then make any final changes to the document in preparation for a potential presentation to city council. Right now, we're planning to be prepared to do that on December 18th, but that could slide into January, depending on how things go. And finally, I want to dig into a little bit more the, the details of the approach we're taking. I mentioned the literature review that we've already started. It's composed of steps 1 through 3 listed here. So, we've just finished compiling the strategies and actions that the city of Everett is already pursuing. So, those include the actions from your Climate Action Plan for Municipal Government, which came out in 2011. It includes strategies and actions that are housed in surface water plan, storm water management plan, the comprehensive plan, sustainability element in particular. There's a climate action inventory. It also includes your 2016 wedge analysis. We've reviewed all of those documents and pulled together, organized by city department, the strategies and actions that are already happening. And just today, sent over to Karen and Bob the list of those, along with some input guidance to receive from city staff. So, that's, this is key. Step two, we want to get input from city staff about what's already working well with regards to the strategies and actions that they're pursuing, what they'd recommend continuing, and any new ideas they have for climate strategies and actions. The third step of the literature review is to take a look at the existing science for climate change in this region, and to identify what's most applicable to Everett. We're going to also look at the wedge analysis, and I'm not sure if that's a familiar term, but that's, yeah, so the wedge analysis, you essentially take all of the emissions reductions that are anticipated from all of the strategies and actions that have been identified, and you add them up to see if they get you toward your target or not. And you add them up, you can do that as a summary, you can do it by sector, like transportation or green economy, but the whole point is to see whether you've come up with strategies and actions that are actually going to get you where you want to go, and what gap may remain. So, we pull all of that together into the draft planning document, which we'll present to you on the 15th. And then, as I mentioned, well, we've got a couple of opportunities to come back and present those results and revise it, hopefully by the end of the year or early next year. This is a tight timeline, but we've worked really closely with Karen and Bob to come up with an approach that we're confident that we can deliver on, and we're really looking forward to your input and guidance along the way. As Karen mentioned, she's already started to get some public input on it, on this plan, and that's going to be really important going forward, so please continue to send your thoughts to Karen if you have them. That is all that I had to cover. I'm happy to take any questions on the approach my team is planning to use. And then, these questions here were, as Karen mentioned, kind of getting a jumpstart on what strategies to include, a vision for this plan. That's what these questions are intended to jumpstart.
Are you able to speak to, just kind of in broad strokes, just kind of what the leading sources of carbon are that were outlined in the wedge analysis, and kind of give us some information on that, to kind of give us some more framework?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, see, my team has mostly looked into those details, but the primary emission sources for the city of Everett are from the transportation sector, and from the use of natural gas in buildings. So, those are the drivers of most city emissions right now.
Can you speak more to the second one, the natural gas in buildings? Is that for heating, or is that for, what are the sources?
It's used as electricity.
And when you're saying in the city, are you talking about just city activities of the municipality, or are you talking about within the city boundaries, including the residents and residential areas?
That's a great question. I think the wedge analysis was specific to city municipal operations, but I'm going to look over here in case that's incorrect. It was broader. Okay, it was broader, so community-wide.
And then, just a question, I think Councilman Roberts kind of touched on a little bit. Do we have a, how do you establish a baseline for greenhouse gas reduction in emissions? Do you have to establish a baseline first of where you're starting from to be able to measure that, and know if having any effectiveness?
Yes, you do. That was done in the 2016 wedge analysis, and that analysis is recent enough that it's likely to still be very applicable today, so we're going to use that as a starting point.
Just wanted to, one correction, the natural gas wedge analysis, that is for heat. The Snohomish County PUD supplies the electricity for Snohomish County. They're a 98% carbon-free utility, so that's why transportation and building heat with natural gas are the low-hanging fruit for us, because our electricity supply is already so green.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Out of curiosity, you know, some ancillary reading I was doing on the subject, and I'm just kind of curious how germane it is to our city in particular, is the carbon that comes from construction, and the carbon that is expended in creating cement, steel, and all that. Do we have any kind of, you know, does the, does the wedge analysis capture that carbon impact, or the potential impact from the growth that we're expecting to see here in our, in our city?
It's a really good question, and it's when we haven't dug into the details of the wedge analysis yet, that's coming in the next couple of weeks. So, let me note that down, and we can come back to that one.
Any other questions here? I actually have one quick question.
I just want to mention that the work that we did on the Growing the Green Economy identified cross-laminated timber as a specific source for development, and we're asking that, and there's at least one project that's contemplating using that in the city, and we've asked that we look at what we would, what it would take for us to open some doors to bring that building material online, as its carbon profile, if you will, is vastly better than cement.
Councilmember Roberts, you know me so well.
Any other questions? I actually do have one quick question. So, did the wedge analysis include carbon sinks, like where mitigation is actually already occurring in terms of forest areas, things of that nature? So, not only what is putting CO2 emissions into the atmosphere, what's actually taking them out?
Yeah, and that's another one, so that I will know in a couple of weeks, once we've actually looked into the details. A team here may know right now, but we've only been working on this for about two weeks, so we've only gotten so far.
I just didn't know if, it sounds like some of this has already been done, but will the analysis also look at where the sinks are, as well as, I'm sorry, the sources? What's creating the CO2 emissions? So, what is actually operating now and mitigating CO2?
Yeah, I think, I think it will in some cases. This is a plan that's focused largely on mitigation, which is either preventing greenhouse gas emissions or taking them out of the atmosphere once they're there. So, there are, there are existing actions in the city of Everett that sequester more carbon in trees, plants, and soil, and then a lot of the actions are designed to reduce emissions from existing operations. So, in that regard, they're preventing future emissions from occurring. Does that help answer your question?
Slightly, but the question still remains. I think it's important, if we're doing this type of analysis, to actually see where are those opportunities that are taking CO2 those opportunities that are taking CO2 out of the atmosphere and mitigating it, and can we actually increase those opportunities? An urban forestry program, something of that nature. I think it's been recent that we've found that the number one way to fight climate change, I think this is a Scientific American article, is plant trees, something as simple as that. So I think it's important to actually kind of look at where those opportunities to mitigate, what the sources, rather than just prevent.
Okay.
I just have one follow-up. Councilmember Roberts brought up cross-laminated timber. In conversation with people involved in the industry, one of the obstacles I was informed of was the challenge it comes for banks to do risk assessment for financing of this construction technique and how there was only one bank in Washington that had done that to this date. And I was just curious, and the community action component, are there, do we see, are is there, is there expectations of a plan of addressing, you know, financing issues or risks, or some of the back-of-house technical challenges that may impede implementation of these policies or the strategic framework we want to implement? Will we be addressing kind of those second, third order challenges in this plan?
It potentially could, and I think that's getting some input on the key obstacles that you already know about in the city would really help identify which of those obstacles to have at the roadmap level. So we'd be looking for both obstacles and opportunities that are really going to set you a foundation to move forward from. So if what you're encountering in baking or finance or insurance locally is a big barrier to moving these actions forward, then I imagine it would be included at this time, but we don't, we don't know yet.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Is there any more to present on this? Is this the?
No, no, that was, that's the total of my slides. I think to the extent that we can get into these questions, it would certainly help us write up a plan and have it be more reflective of what, what's happening in Everett right now. So I'll leave it to you to see what timing you can think since.
Can I just clarify? You talked about the, the transportation sector. Is that really just another way of saying the internal combustion engine burning petroleum fuels?
Yes and no. So it includes, it definitely includes people driving their own cars and getting them out of their cars and getting them into hybrid or electric vehicles instead. So includes things like EV charging stations to support that kind of infrastructure. It includes changing over your public transit fleet to a more hybrid source of fuel. It includes things like changing over the city fleet vehicles to be, you know, more, less, or less reliant on fossil fuels. So those are all vehicle-based. It can also, it also blends a lot with that compact multimodal land use. So some of the best ways to increase use of public transit are to have it be in places that people can use it. And so there's definitely overlap between what you do in transportation and what you do in land use decisions, neighborhood development decisions, that help people make different transportation decisions, including like biking and walking. So it's also includes getting people out of vehicles entirely.
So does any other council person have any comments on the questions that are up there in terms of feedback for the consultants as they're moving forward?
I think I'm not surprised to hear that transportation is the number one contributor in our area. I think if you're on the road at all, between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., you're aware of the traffic issues that we have, and it just seems to get worse and worse every year, or maybe that's just my imagination. But I think in our area, we have maybe some unique conditions because we have a lot of people on the road at specific times going to just a specific location. A lot of people need to get to Boeing at the same time every day and then home. I think I've talked to a lot of people who work there at different times of the day, different shifts, and a common complaint seems to be that if they want to take the bus, it's hard to do. It's not convenient. I know Boeing is a, is a big plant, so, you know, if you're working on one end of Boeing and you take the bus, it's not necessarily the most convenient drop-off. I think biking could be a lot easier to do for people to get to Boeing. I know if you want to bike to work and you work at Boeing, it's challenging, but I think that that could be a way where we could work with them, work with, work with Boeing to make that simpler, maybe incentivizing some kind of bike parking. I know it's even hard to just find a place to put your bike when you get to work. So that doesn't seem like an unreasonable ask in terms of accommodating that. But that would be my number one, first course of action is to address, there's just the volume going to and from Boeing every day, and maybe how we could make it easier for these people to use public transportation and/or bike. Because I do think that that would dramatically reduce traffic and emissions. Thank you.
I guess, may I address a couple of the questions? I guess, first of all, the first question, I think, beginning, having these conversations here at this level is, is great. I think there's a lot of opportunity in the fact that, at least the sense that I get is that there are a lot of people, and I think a lot of people in this city, who would want to support something like this and applaud this effort. But I do think that maybe one obstacle is people just don't know how to do that, and there are, you know, how do you reduce driving? Well, I think the only way you can reduce driving is if you have an alternative. And finding those alternatives is not that easy. How do you, how do you stop using natural gas to teach your house? Well, I've already got a gas, a gas furnace. I don't, you know, and if I do that, what do I, what do I switch to? So I think just change in itself is hard, is the big obstacle, and providing those ways. But like I said, I do think that if there is a way presented to people, and if they can feel like there's something that's doable and attainable, that I think there's a lot of opportunity and that people would grab onto that. At least I'd like to think that.
Agreed. I actually think updating a bicycle map would make a big difference for the city. I think a lot of folks really just don't know where these bicycle trails are. I think changing the timing on some traffic lights so that they're a little bit more pedestrian-friendly, because we have some really large corridors, that even if you have a walkway, they just don't feel very safe. So looking at things of that nature, you know, what kind of cost-effective improvements? I know the Transportation Department probably already has a lot of ideas, but if we can reinforce them in a plan like this, that just makes them stronger. So that would be my suggestion, because I think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity in terms of pedestrian-friendly bicycles, but we just have one major obstacle or two along the route that's really creating a problem, and it's preventing, you know, a five-mile corridor or something like that, just because this particular obstacle is difficult to negotiate. So.
I think to piggyback off of that, even just, and I don't know how realistic this is, but even just a, a walking map of Everett would be helpful, because I know, I walk a lot with my daughters, and depending on where we need to go, and if I have a stroller or if I'm carrying one, or, you know, it's, it can be really inconvenient to find that the sidewalk has run out on you, and you have to backtrack and go around another way, or, you know, you can't get over the bumps with your stroller because there aren't any ADA ramps on that street, or, you know, so if there was a map that said, you know, hey, if you want to get around from A to B, this is a really smooth route, or these are where the sidewalks are, or these are where they aren't, might be helpful.
Just to piggyback off personal experience, like having done a walk, a lot of walking in Everett recently, and, and then tagging that on to, after that, deciding to train for a marathon and plotting out a lot of running routes in Everett. There is a, continuity in sidewalks is a challenge here in the city. Continuity in bike paths, running paths are a challenge in the city. And the quality of the sidewalk, especially along our major, some of our major arteries where we have our bus routes, you have a three-foot sidewalk next to a 45-mile Everett Mallway, a very narrow sidewalk next to High to a, to our bus routes. No one's going to walk along there. And so, you know, making sure we have good user experiences is just, you know, my user experience has been hit and miss. You know, lovely scenery, lovely, lovely city, but hard to navigate as a pedestrian.
Commissioner Finch, you look like you want to say your.
Well, I'm not going to talk about sidewalks. But it strikes me that this is a very multidisciplinary issue, and you've touched upon a few of the disciplines and areas. Will this plan address things like, instead of changing load split in transportation, will it address incentives and controls that are available to move to high-employment centers in Everett, rather than, rather than changing load split, which is a really hard thing to do, it takes a long time? Locating large employers in the area would definitely reduce vehicle miles traveled. And so it strikes me that if that, this plan can reach that deep into other areas of incentives and controls we have available to us, I think it'd be helpful.
Thank you. I think that's a good example of something that is at that strategic roadmap level, so it could be in there. Got a lot of more reading to do and more input to gather.
Commissioner Zelensky?
Yes, to Commissioner Gins' earlier comment about Boeing. I think it would be useful if the plan not only had a menu of ideas that ordinary citizens and households can take, but also what that businesses can take. And not just Boeing, but the smaller employers too. Things that they can do to encourage their employees to use alternate means to get to work, maybe combining wellness with transportation. A lot of businesses have transport, have wellness programs now, and maybe that can be synced up with how people get to their job.
I know that in the past, Boeing has implemented a, like a walking challenge, so, you know, getting your steps in at work, that I think that they may be interested in doing a bike-to-work challenge at some point. If we were, you know, if we were doing the part on our end as the city to make that a little easier, then they would probably work, work with us in incentivizing that kind of program.
I think creating a communication network is good too, because ideas that Boeing might have, there might be some obstacles that maybe the city or the county can help address, vice versa.
What is the process for a business to get a bike rack installed nearby? Is that something they can reach out to the city and be on a, on a waiting list for a bike rack on their sidewalk? Or I guess I don't really know how that works.
I believe that that's something that would have to be coordinated with, if it's going to be in public right of way with our Public Works Department. If they want to put it on private property, then they're free to do so by themselves. But, yeah, there are some certain places where you can and can't put infrastructure in the sidewalk, and so, but that's something that shouldn't be difficult.
Commissioner Lark?
I just have a quick, broader question. You know, in conversation a while back, I was, someone informed me that there was a requirement for, you know, businesses of a certain size to provide partially subsidized ORCA cards to employees here in Snohomish County. And one of that, and one of the crux of that conversation was that they weren't, and there was nothing being done. So when we put together these large strategic plans and these goals and these, you know, these targets we want business partners to hit, you know, community partners to hit, what are, what will be talking about enforcement mechanisms and enforcing these goals and targets that we were talking about in that strategic plan? Because, you know, if no one does it, nothing happens, and it's not going to get done.
As, as the person who oversees the city's commute trip reduction program, I work with businesses of 100 employees or more who show up to work between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m., five days a week, 12 months a year. All those businesses are required by state law to be part of the commute trip reduction program. There's not a requirement that they provide subsidized ORCA cards or anything like that, but we work on programs to incentivize the business to incentivize their employees. Bike-to-month, bike-to-work month is a good example, and Boeing does do that, and so do others. So, so we have an active program on that. You know, it's, you know, mode split is tough. It's tough to get people to shift. They have to have good viable options. And so I think that's something that, I love the part of the conversation that is talking about exploring these things, exploring walking maps and bike maps and finishing the bike master plan and providing other incentives. You know, transit has to work well for people to want to take it. If you have to transfer twice on the way to work, you're probably not going to take transit, so, but it's expensive too. So there's lots of things to debate and consider here as this goes on. And just let me reiterate, as Councilmember Roberts said, this is to lay a foundation. This is just a beginning. Don't see this as an end product. This is, this product, when it's done, will launch us into our next phases of this, because as, as Councilmember Roberts also said, this is going to be with us for the rest of our lives. So this is, this is basically chapter one. You know, it's incorporating a lot of work we've already been done, but there's so much more to do. It won't all be encapsulated in this one plan.
Are there any thoughts on what a resilient Everett looks like to you all?
Mobility without planning. No, I, you, you, I just, you don't have to plan to take, you take a trip in your car. You just get in and go. Alternative mobility without planning.
You said what I wanted to say, but you said it better. Thank you.
How are you coordinating or will you coordinate with the electricity supply folks? PUD, Puget Power, Seattle City Light? I know they're not all in Everett, but we've got to have some cooperation so this thing can grow.
Yeah, are you wondering how the, if the strategies will be complementary to other local utilities?
To make sure that they can actually be accomplished?
Yeah, and so Snohomish PUD isn't a big target for this plan because the, they're providing 98% renewable electricity already. But to the larger point of whether we're looking for strategies to be complementary to similar entities throughout the region, the answer to that is definitely yes. That's part of why we're looking at the regional climate science summaries, and we are looking at the Puget Sound Regional Council's efforts, we're looking at what the K4C is doing. And Councilman Roberts alluded to the common targets for greenhouse gas emissions reductions so that everyone's working toward the same thing. So we're trying to be complementary with those efforts as well.
Is there communication? I mean, let's say part of it is to 50% increase in electrification of automobiles. Does the PUD have the ability to supply that across the city, not just in one neighborhood? So you got to, like Bob said, if you got to get out of your car, plug it in, and walk four blocks, you're probably going to drive your gas car. So that, that cooperation is more what I was.
Okay, yeah, that's a great question. So I think that because we're, we're really just starting things off right now, and we're moving so quickly, we're relying on what city staff already know about those kinds of relationships and what we can find in the existing scientific and related literature for that. So something like EV charging may come up as, as a strategy in the plan to install EV charging stations equitably across the city or something like that. I'm just making that up. And then if, should that be selected as a strategy to move forward, at that time, you would get into the details of the communications and how to, and how to really move that thing forward. So we're really just looking to get the ideas on paper, identify the key opportunities and obstacles, and then the details come after that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on this topic? Commissioner Zelensky?
Yeah, I'm wondering what is meant by the term resilient.
That's a great question, and it's really what it, I mean, it's really what it means to you. So when you think 20 or 30 years in the future, resilience technically means the ability to bounce back from an obstacle or a challenge. So if there's a big storm in Everett, how well and how easily can the city bounce back from that to either its previous state or a better state? That's the technical definition of resilience. But what that means to each person really But what that means to each person really varies. So it's kind of like what, you know, what does that look like to, to you and to others in 20, 30, 50 years?
But it's not necessarily how does Everett deal with the rising sea level.
Oh, I think it could be, yeah.
Could be.
Yeah.
It's a Socratic question.
Because we have a lot of salt, we have a lot of saltwater shoreline in this town. And how, how we deal with that is going to be pretty important, I think.
I send Mick Taffy.
Mick Taffy.
So we've received a lot of information this evening, and I just want to put it out there to the audience, if there's members of the audience that are interested in having a comment on this particular agenda item, if you have anything that you'd like to add to the conversation or maybe ask, this is the time. Please come on up and share the podium.
My name is Dean Smith. I live in Everett in the Port Gardner neighborhood. I'm past president of 350 Everett. And let me tell you a little story that before 350 Everett, we had an organization in this town called Transition Town, which was exactly what this is. Transition towns started in England about 12 years ago. Rob Hopkins, who was a young teacher, went to Kinsale, Ireland to do his student teaching. And he read about climate change and peak oil and those things. And he said, well, surely our local governments and federal governments have plans for how to deal with this. And so he looked for those plans and he didn't find any. And so he decided that year that his fifth grade class in Kinsale, Ireland could make an energy descent action plan for Kinsale. And they did. And they published it. It's on the internet today. The next year, he was teaching in Totnes, England, and he decided to do the same thing again. He took his fifth grade class and they made an energy descent action plan for Totnes. And they went home, told their parents about it, and the parents got all excited. They thought this is a really interesting thing to do. So the parents joined in, the town council joined in, the police department joined in. The whole town got involved in making that dis- energy descent action plan for Totnes. And it was published and it's on the internet now. Today, there are thousands of transition towns across the world. Here in Everett, we are the 101st transition town in the United States. We did not get to the point of making an energy descent action plan, the four or five of us who were involved in transition Everett at that point, because we just ran out of steam. We, we didn't have, nobody was paying us anything for what we were doing. It was all our own initiative and our own expense. Most of us went on and made big changes in our lives that made us more resilient and made us more energy efficient and less polluting and less producing less greenhouse gases. But, but we didn't carry on as a group. And frankly, I think that this is a very, very big problem. Not only are we going to be dealing with it the rest of our lives, I've for one have been dealing with it my whole life already. I'm 77 years old. And I have seen so many things, so many changes happen in the world, and they've all been away from the direction of resilience and less pollution and, and so forth and so on. So I, I think this is a big deal. You know, when it comes to Boeing, airplanes are one of the most worst things there is for greenhouse gases. Why do we let Boeing continue to make airplanes? We're going to have to stop that, folks. It's going to take some real courage or some real desperation to really solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jonathan Witty. For the record, I live 735th Street in Everett. And also I have provided a letter to the commission earlier today and for the consultants. I wasn't aware that it was going to be generally distributed. So I asked, it has my personal email address and cell phone number on there. So you're welcome to call me, but please treat that discreetly. That's all I ask. I don't want necessarily everybody in the world to know that. So as a physician who's practiced in Everett for over 30 years and a member of the Washington Physicians for Social Responsibility, I am very concerned about the health effects of what is being caused by climate change. And as you already know, the climate is already changing. We're starting drastically warm due to greenhouse gas emissions and from, that's from the burning primarily of fossil fuels. And the health effects, even locally, are multiple and they're already being experienced. And so that's what I would like to address, most of it summarized in, in the letter. But things like effects directly due to heat, such as cardiovascular events, air quality related effects such as cardiovascular disease and respiratory disease, allergies and asthma, severe weather related events such as floods and mudslides, which we seem to have here every year. Certain infectious diseases such as West Nile virus that we hardly ever saw before. Even we're seeing Lyme disease, which was unheard of a couple of decades ago. And then there's other problems, health problems such as toxic algae blooms, red tide effects. And this is just to mention a few of the health effects. And I just want to give one example of, has to do with air pollution. And carbon dioxide and multiple other pollutants such as microscopic particulate matter are most often emitted together. So when we talk about air pollution, we're not only talking about carbon dioxide, but we're talking about smoke and other toxic things. And it's been estimated that globally, air pollution kills nine million people each year. And this is due to causing or worsening a variety of cardiovascular and respiratory diseases. And air pollution, even at lower levels that we commonly see in the United States, has been shown by studies at the University of Washington to cause calcium deposits in coronary arteries, which leads to blockage and heart attacks and so forth. And it's estimated that pollution here in the United States causes between 20,000 and 50,000 deaths annually. And this is just one example of the multiple adverse effects that climate change is already having on our health. So while the personal cost of health effects in terms of pain, suffering and loss of life is enormous, there's also, what I'd like to point out is that there's also an economic cost to these health effects. 2010 study on the economics cost of mortality from air pollution in the United States, it was found that this cost from pollu-, just pollution was 4% of the GDP or amounted to $600 billion. And so when we talk about, geez, we can't afford the cost of mitigating the effects of climate change, just costs too much. It's a hundred dollar, remember when we were working on 1631 and the common complaint was, geez, this is going to cost me a hundred dollars a year in extra gasoline costs? Well, you know, wake up, we're, we're paying thousands of dollars each year for the healthcare costs. So I argue that we can't afford not to, to mitigate climate change. So what would I recommend that this commission and consultants include in this plan? In reviewing for tonight, I looked at the Everett Climate Action Plan from 2011 that was referred to earlier. And I could only find a single paragraph that mentioned the adverse health effects of climate change. And I couldn't find anything that associated these health effects with the economic costs. So I would urge the planning commission to address these health issues in greater detail. For example, ask questions such as, in the city of Everett, how many people are affected by the various illnesses and disease caused or aggravated by climate change? Two, what areas and neighborhoods of the city are particularly impacted since it's known that certain economic and cultural minority areas, they're located in areas that are more affected by transportation, pollution and so forth? And thirdly, you know, what is the economic cost of these impacts, such as costs of increased emergency room visits, hospitalization, outpatient visit, medication expenses, lost wages and income, and maybe even tax revenue because of illness? So I think it's further, it's imperative that the city make a concerted effort to educate the public about the dire consequences of the climate, climate change, which is already, we are already experiencing, including the cost, both the economy and health. And this can be done in a number of ways. The city could sponsor events, presentation, town hall type forums, neighborhood association meetings, healthcare provider presentations or other health focused events. One of the people at a meeting I recently attended suggested the city combining with some of the health conscious restaurant, restaurants, the maybe local organic food co-ops and the healthcare community. And maybe have something like a vegetarian cookoff event. So it's cooking lessons that would not only improve the health, but also cut down on the, on the meat consumption. And as you probably know, one of the leading causes of greenhouse gases, methane release is in the agricultural industry with, primarily with beef, industrial growing, raising of beef. So something like that might catch the public's interest. And I think that once the public understands the true costs of climate change, they're going to be much more receptive to budgetary constraints. I know in passing a budget, there's always, you know, this is going to cost this, we've got to take it from somewhere, we can't afford that. But I think once the public understands this, they're going to be supportive of these decisions. And that, once that occurs, it's going to be a political and social will to actually start making a change. So thank you for allowing me to, to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Witty.
So if there's any other questions for me, or if you can think of some later, please get back to me. You have my contact information as everybody else.
And you wanted that distributed as widely as possible?
Yeah, right, right. Maybe publish it in the Herald.
Thank you. I think I saw someone else in the audience that would.
You don't need these.
No, but I wanted your email. My name's Marilyn Mallory, and I also live on 105th Place in Everett. And John, who was, is a retired physician, is very concerned with the health aspects. And I am a retired Everett teacher. So I am also concerned with much of what he said for educational aspects. Because when you look at the key obstacles, it, you know, not only are there the physical obstacles, but it is, we want our neighbors and our businesses to also be in line with whatever you're planning. And that, if we work together, if you look across the country, there have been some cities, some counties, California states, who have really done a good job on making their plans. And the reason is they're all together on the same page. And so I'd like to make sure that there is an educational component in this to help people understand. My husband and I do a lot of presentations on climate issues. And even though many of us here are aware, when you talk to the general community, a lot of people think, well, that's for another country or another place or whatever. They don't realize that Everett is also experiencing it right now. So I, I agree with John that I think as, as people understand, and of course, I'm so concerned with children as an educator, when they understand how very important it is to their children's future, then, then we will be on the same page. And I think it will decrease our obstacles for making this plan work.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome.
Mary Rollins. I live on 46th Street in Everett, across from the new YMCA. A couple of things have come to mind as I'm listening. The house is on fire and we're taking an eyedropper full of water to it. And I agree with both of the last speakers. We are needing a really concerted effort. And I think the time has come for us to pull out all the stops, get onboard every single segment of government and come together as if a meteor was coming to hit the planet. And how will we deal with that? Just a couple of things as to the work that's been done by the consultants. If we, somebody brought up, let's time the traffic lights, let's get rid of the traffic lights. Let's put in some roundabouts. The amount of emissions that are coming off of cars that are sitting at stoplights or waiting for children to pick them up, I know there's a big campaign out there, you know, emission free zone, turn off your car while you're waiting. These are the kind of education efforts that are really, really needed to let people know. Inflate your tires, improve your gas mileage. Simple things that everyday people can do that they don't, you know, that they can have an impact on their small level, but if we multiply it out, it's going to have a big impact on our city. I'm volunteering Colby Avenue to have the first roundabouts in front of the Y because I can't get across my street. I can't turn right there already for like 15 minutes a day. And so waiting for the traffic that hasn't even come yet from the Y. But if you, if you do that and all those places where there's just people sitting at traffic lights, a lot of cities are investing now in roundabouts. And you can look at their data about how much they're saving on emissions by putting roundabouts in. It's something that the city can do right now, today. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to give our comments. My name is Marcella Everett. I'm here speaking a little bit in behalf of Everett Bike Walk. So I don't drive, so I can tell you experiences about what is it to be a biker and a bus rider. And I heard a lot about bicycling. It came, I think it comes often as a possible solution because I see it as a hub where many aspects intersect. If you think about bicycles, they reduce traffic. One more person in a bicycle is one less person in a car. They don't pollute. They make citizens happier and healthier. And they reduce the need for parking. So they connect many, many aspects in one simple thing. What do I and many of us see as the main hurdle to get in a bicycle is safety. I, I am a fragile human being. And I just cannot stand myself, the thought of getting out and hitting a car. It's just too scary. So I used to bike a lot when I lived in Seattle that has more protected bike lanes. When I moved to Everett, I reduced drastically my bicycling after I almost get hit in, on 112. And when I had a son, I hold my son on the bus. I take him, I take the two, when some of you say, oh, nobody takes to work two buses. I do, I take three, even if it is necessary, so I don't put my son on a bicycle because it's too scary. So my main thing is think about safety. Imagine yourself in a bicycle and then imagine one of those big trucks that are now on the street. That's, that's what I think is what I would encourage you thinking when you do your job. Imagine a person on a bicycle, like a human being, just standing there. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name is Bill Sheets. I, I'm a, as a former Herald reporter, I'm like Paul, I'm used to sitting over there rather than being here. So, so this is a little strange for me. But two main points. First of all, I'm really glad she said what she just said because that was one of the points I was going to make is that if any of you have ever been to Berlin or Amsterdam, you know that, that, that when you're walking on the sidewalk, you have to be really careful how, where you're walking because half of the sidewalk is for pedestrians and half of it is, is for bicycles. And if you're not careful, you get run over by a bike. And so, but that's, but that's, that's exactly what she was talking about is that they separate the bicycles from the vehicular traffic there. And that's, and there's, one of the reasons they have so many, so many bicycle riders there. And I think here, obviously, that's, that, that can be expensive to add those to streets, but you can do it as you redo streets, like being done over here right now. The other thing. The other thing is, is solar power. You know, it's, it's true that hydropower is, you know, is, is carbon free, but it has a big impact on fish, as we know, and on salmon. And the more we can supply our power through other renewables, the more fish we can save. And I imagine most of you have heard about the, the dramatic recovery of the El Wah estuary that happened over there after they took out the El Wah Dam. And so the more renewable power we can generate, the more we can do that in other places. And there's a, there was a, there's a research arm of the Department of Energy that estimated a couple of years ago that, that 39% of the energy in the United States could be generated strictly through rooftop solar. And that's more than any one source generates now. And it drives me crazy when I hear about solar farms, when I see all this unused rooftop space out there. And if you look at satellite photos of city buildings, this building and the one over in Cedar Avenue, there's like a huge expanse of rooftop that could be generating energy. And, and so, and it's, and that would, there'd be some upfront costs there for the city, but you, you would pay for itself in the long run, many times over, because you're generating your own energy then. And, and it's just so if the city can work with, with the PUD on, you know, on, you know, making a good deal, working with the PUD on helping, you know, on sort of, of course, you know, you're going to need some help from higher up governments, no doubt about it, but generating more solar power for, generating more incentive for solar power for everyone, then, then that's, that, I think that's, that's, that'll get us, you know, a lot farther down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up? These are all great ideas. Really appreciate the input.
Hi. Hi, my name is Thackem Connors. I'm a resident here for about five years now. I go to Everett Community College and actually did a little thing about emissions and how to take certain emissions, like, for instance, grass and lawn clippings and turn it into a biogas for the purpose of utilizing energy. There's some things that I think a lot of people could be doing. For instance, like, not grow so much grass. It doesn't cut carbon, like, you know, it's, people assume it takes, let's see, it's like, according to the EPA, one lawnmower emits 89 pounds of CO2 and 34 pounds of pollutants per year. According to Swedish study, using lawnmower for one hour has the same carbon footprint as a 100 mile car trip from a car that is about 1970s. So, I mean, that's a big impact, if you think about it. And to think about how much lawn does a city mow. We should probably look at maybe the possibility of, how could we make an incentive program to help people reduce the amount of lawns they have? Not only do we have to worry about the carbon imprint, that we have to worry about the pollution to the rivers, we have to worry about the amount of water we're using. We should probably start thinking about how we're going to reduce our water usage, too. Because, I mean, it's nice, I mean, sometimes to just think you can go lay out on the lawn, maybe a nice park or two, you know. Legion Park has amazing amount of grass, but think about how much we're wasting on our environment, you know, just in CO2 by maintaining that lawn. There could be more trees, there could be more natural plants that come from this area. Maybe Washington State should actually try to work some kind of incentive program. Maybe Everett should start it, pioneer it, by saying, hey, if you plant native plants, things that will help feed the habitat, things that will help retain water in the ground, things that will help reduce carbon, because you're taking out that carbon imprint by watering your lawn, mowing it. We could probably make a pretty big change also. If we must take lawn clippings and do that, we should probably, sorry, look at the possibility of a biogas generator, you know. Again, we're trying to stem away from natural gas, that's a good idea, but also there needs to be transitions in both ways. We should look at making energy in more than one way. Possibly another idea is too, what kind of laws do we have against windmills on a person's lawn? You know, we get a significant amount of wind. Is there a way to make a windmill not look obtrusive? I think so. You know, maybe we should look at, if there's any company out there that's willing to design a better windmill that makes, that looks non-intrusive, or, you know, you know, not just saying, you know, the light from the sun. I mean, we get a lot of wind, too. We're a coastal town. So that's another idea. Also, Ms. McGinn, you said, mentioned something about Boeing and as far as like bicycles is concerned. One thing I do happen to know is that Boeing uses a good amount of bicycles on the inside of their warehouse, but they have decided to try to reduce that because the cost of maintaining them. And, I don't know, maybe also clutter as well. I would say, maybe we should try to encourage them to, instead of decrease, but increase, and provide maybe zones where they can have their employees track around the building with these bikes. And if they don't want to do it, maybe the city should work a deal with a rental bike company, or, you know, scooter company. I've seen these scooters appearing everywhere to help facilitate this transportation issue, where people feel that they don't want to, you know, take a bus, because it would, you know, they have to make another transfer, transfer, or just it's a long trek, you know, to get where they are. I mean, most, most of the time, it's because of traffic, you know. As stated before by a previous resident, about bicycle lanes. I mean, I've thought about biking, and I've almost got hit by cars just walking around here. So, I mean, biking lanes would be a really good idea. And maybe starting with major, major thoroughfares, you know, and maybe making laws that help protect bikers, too. I mean, it, when a biker has to share the road, a lot of people treat them as if they're a car. And you can't do that, because a bicyclist can die or be injured forever, just merely because they're trying to save the environment and transport themselves. So, I mean, you know, as far as like, you know, how, how we reduce emissions is concerned, I mean, we should really kind of look at what, what can the city offer, too? Because, I mean, the thing is, is that the unfortunate problem is that people want incentives. They want some kind of enticement. I don't know if that's even possible. Maybe, maybe it will take a broader aspect, like taking corporations, small businesses, the city, everyone getting together and saying, how can we make an incentive program that will ask people to change? To get people to stop polluting? Maybe just get rid of their lawn. How do we do that?
These are all really terrific suggestions. Appreciate this. So, but we're starting to run short on time, and I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to say something. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to?
Good evening. Ryan Weber from the beautiful Delta Neighborhood here in Everett. Thank you for taking on the threat of climate change. I mean, honestly, the last five summers or so have been scorching. I grew up here my whole life, and it's definitely been different. Perhaps more than any other decision you make, this will shape the future for, for us and especially our children. Among points to consider are stormwater runoff, renewable energy, river and wetland restoration, managing the tree canopy, bike and pedestrian infrastructure, and encouraging residents and businesses to use biodegradable projects as we move to a cradle-to-cradle production While some proposals may seem audacious, remember that switching to 100% clean energy seemed impossible 10 or 20 years ago. Now's the time for bold ideas. Firstly, although planning is holding this public hearing, the public must have the framework to provide ongoing feedback on various climate initiatives that are being discussed today in the form of a city commission, such as an environmental commission. Second, now's the time to make Everett more walkable and bike friendly than ever before, so people feel safe and are encouraged to get out of their cars. We've, a lot of people have mentioned this. And as you were talking about sidewalks, there is actually a sidewalk master plan that the city has. They've mapped all the missing sidewalks and unsafe pedestrian zones within a mile of every public school. And I'd have to say the progress on that has been incremental, to say the least. Also, investment in the Grand Avenue Pedestrian Bridge should be matched with, for example, a pedestrian bridge already included in the bike master plan on the riverside from East Marine View Drive to 16th, which would connect to Smith Island near the water treatment plant, when that water main also needs to be replaced. Also, let's see, more investment in bike and pedestrian infrastructure is, is obviously needed and should be more highly prioritized. Next, to follow up on the plastic bag ordinance, biodegradable food service ware ordinance would eliminate plastic and styrofoam containers that, you know, the last time I went out to eat and took it home, you know, it's like a big bag full of, big plastic bag full of other little micro compartments and containers, and it just creates a lot of garbage, none of that's biodegradable. There are other municipalities doing similar things. And with economies of scale, those biodegradable project, products are going to get less expensive. So, this reduces the impact on landfills, keeps our waterways clean for habitat restoration. Next thing is to break up the concrete deserts, such as Evergreen Way, Broadway, as examples. A recent study, which Commissioner Beck mentioned, mentioned that this is one of the, I guess, most straightforward and effective ways to reduce the effects of climate change. So, I guess what we're talking about really is, is trees in the medians of these, like Evergreen Way is a seven lane road. It's just over five miles of seven lane road buffered on both sides by, by parking lots. And another study by NPR released today, or NPR covered it, shows that low income areas tend to be hotter, so they suffer more, the results of climate change, which really, that stretch of Evergreen Way is a perfect example of that. It, you know, runs right through the southern part of Everett, you know, it's kind of just the big scar through the earth. So if we could mitigate that. Linwood just recently released their plans, as they're planning for the sound transit line coming through. They're, they're doing just that. They're putting trees in medians and on the sides of their main boulevard there. It serves to mitigate flooding, acts to filter groundwater of pollutants before it enters the fresh water. And also on the subject of trees, the city currently has a vacant arborist position. So there is nobody, there's nobody managing this at all, other than, in some ways, the Parks Department serves that purpose. Perhaps the arborists working with the Parks Department could work on studying the existing tree canopy in the city and, and annual depletion and/or growth of that canopy, which is currently, as far as I know, not being monitored at all. Let's see, lastly, a couple other things. The other thing that came up, for transportation, it's really hard to, really expensive to either widen the freeway or create a new freeway, as we've seen with Highway Two, the Boeing freeway, these are bottlenecks that the city can't really fix on, on its own. But we, we could go over traffic with a gondola system, like, there are some similar sized cities like Spokane, Portland have some gondolas in use, and there are others around the world. They're much cheaper than rail. I know we're getting some rail, but it's going to be a few 20 years or so. So it's much quicker, cheaper, easier to install. It's electric, and it's fairly easy to move a line if necessary. But you can, you know, connect your industrial and work centers pretty easily and just fly right over traffic. So that's, that's pretty much it. That sums it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the audience that would like to speak? And I'm going to request...
Madam Chair? I'd just like to ask the consultant if she could respond to, we've heard a lot of very specific, interesting ideas today, and I'd like to hear a little bit about how you envision a climate action plan that's primarily strategic in nature, dealing with a lot of these very specific ideas we're hearing tonight.
That's a great question. It's what I've been sitting there thinking about most time. What's that?
You've been given a lot.
Yeah, no, they are all really good ideas, and I think that part of it will be combining some of the specific actions. Some of them are housed under things like transportation or, or electrification, for example, that's really about energy. So some of them might be about rolling that up into an overarching strategy that gets at some of the specific actions we've been hearing. I think we are definitely noting them down, so it could be providing an appendix with a list of actions that people came up with, so they can be used in, in future stages of the planning effort. And, and then there are some in there that are at that, that are more of that roadmap level, that we, we can kind of take with, take and, take and run with those. So those are some few, a few ideas I've been thinking about, sitting there. They're all really good ideas, but I think it's about synthesizing and, and rolling them up into something that's, that's more at the roadmap level. Thank you for all the ideas.
Commissioner McGinn, did you have a?
I, I did have another question for you, PJ. I, I, I think it makes sense, of course, if we're talking about a climate action plan that we're really, really focused in on greenhouse gases. But I'm wondering if there's any room for maybe a complimentary part of this plan that also addresses additional environmental protection strategies? I'm thinking water use, cleanup of brownfield sites or contaminated sites in the city, bee safe parks, you know, our parks and rec department, if we're encouraging them to be nontoxic and safe for bees, and the street maintenance heat island effect. I mean, there are so many complimentary parts of this puzzle that we could be incorporating, but I'm not sure if this is an appropriate vehicle for, for all of it. I mean, there's just so much, but, but things that the city could do to broaden the scope just a little bit, beyond greenhouse gases?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that some of those items are already being done by the the city. So in looking at the half a dozen or so plans that we looked at, we are really looking for those that were related specifically to climate change. So, but I remember seeing, for example, pesticide reduction and pesticide-free zones is already something that is an action under, that I think the Parks Department is doing. There are some other actions that you listed that really dovetail really well with climate change strategies, and they provide additional benefits beyond the greenhouse gas reduction. So where we see that alignment, I think that those actions would be under, and strategies would be under consideration for the planning effort. I think that in planning processes like these, we would use like an introductory section of a document to talk, to indicate where there are complimentary efforts ongoing. For a plan like this to really be usable and something that City Council can use for prioritization, it really does need to be targeted to the greenhouse gases specifically. But that's not to say that there's not a lot of other really important work happening. We want to acknowledge that in the appropriate part of the document. Did I answer your question?
It does. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so I think we have some more audience members that would like to come and have some input. I'm going to make a request, just for time's sake, that as much as we can prioritize the suggestions, this is just the beginning, and we can receive lots of input as we continue to go through this process, so.
My name is Pam Kepford. I live at 5621 Rockefeller Avenue, and I'm also a member of 350. 350 was founded in 2000. It's an international organization designed to help mitigate climate. Unfortunately, America is behind a lot of other countries where we're active, but we're here in Everett trying our best. Anyway, I was going to do a long thing about how scary it is, but maybe I don't need to do that, you know? There's a hurricane in Florida right now, waters are rising here, our sewage treatment plant is at sea level. Okay. I want to talk about velocity, the speed of change. Anybody that's got one of these in their pockets knows how fast things have changed. Anybody that's been informed about the opioid epidemic and the homeless know how fast things can change for the worse. I'm seriously interested in whether or not government is able to handle rapid change. You know, I just, I just, government, although there's a saying, "The wheels of the gods grind slowly, but they grind exceeding small," you know? And I'm not saying the government is God, you know, but I'm saying governments tend to move slowly, and they also tend to deal in very, and they need to deal in very specific details they have to deal with, like building codes and all that stuff. And it's very difficult to think about a government reacting with velocity. Anyway, the IPCC says we have to solve this problem in about 10 years, and I applaud Everett and the group here for talking about a 2040 deadline, but we may not have that leisure. Other locations have taken action. Minneapolis, Minnesota has eliminated R1 zoning in their city. The state of Oregon has eliminated R1 zoning in their state. California is mandating solar energy on all the buildings, and New York City is considering eliminating glass and skyscrapers. So we can find out some of the things other organizations are doing in this existential threat. Paul talked about building codes and this laminated lumber stuff, you know, for structural timbers. Well, there's another new thing coming down the line, you know? How is the city going to take advantage of innovations as they occur? I'm losing my place here. How fast can government really respond to innovations, especially when sometimes we're looking in the rearview mirror here? So what I'd like to suggest is that the city of Everett adopt a citizen climate commission or advisory board, because there's a lot of talent in this city, and every one of us has skin in this game, you know? I'm suggesting that there's a lot of climate change organizations. My organization, 350, has been in existence for 20 years. You've heard from Climate Reality, you've heard from Physicians for Social Responsibility, the Audubon, the Sierra Club, the League of Women Voters, the Y, the NAACP. C-3, a local organization, is having a climate justice conference next year. Familis Unidas, the co-op down here, has sustainability plans for individual citizens to take involving the products and the things that they've done at the co-op. Churches, a lot of churches never have green teams, right? Everybody is, not everybody, a lot of people in Everett have a lot of resources. And because this is huge, and because it's difficult to tackle and understand, as you're hearing tonight, along with all the other things the planning commission does, I'm seriously suggesting that we have a citizen climate commission or advisory board to help gather up with the citizens in Everett know, and to reach out to our fellow citizens. I also encourage that every single decision made in this city by this board or any other board or commission be seen through the lens of climate. We really have to treat this seriously. I am trying to change my life, but I've got gas at my house, and I've got a gas car, and I'm a low-income senior. There's not much I can do about it. But if you want to buy me out of my gas furnace, I'll go for it. No problem. Okay? So we need to encourage innovation. We need to harness creativity. We need to recognize positive changes when they come along and incorporate them as soon as possible into the plan. I'm glad we've got a consultant. I'm glad this is just the first step, because this is a lifelong struggle. And I think, oh, because we need all of us, we need every citizen, because all of us, because none of us is as smart as all of us together.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure.
I apologize. I apologize, I know we have a time thing here.
Just your name and address one more time, just to make sure.
Kevin Connors. I live in 47th and Fowler area. So the other one thing is, I'm glad to see that we're making more housing, you know, like apartments and stuff like that, for, that's going to help, you know, a lot with getting people places to live. But the one problem I am seeing is that a lot of apartment buildings are just popping up everywhere, and I don't know if anyone's really taking a look at the long-term effect of the impact on, that's going to have on traffic. That's the other thing, is that, you know, we go too high up. What's going to happen with our roads? You know, we already have a lot of cars, a lot of issues with that. Is there a way we could incorporate maybe in the planning when we give these apartment buildings, you know, the right to build? Make them take the responsibility of, say, I don't know, helping with the traffic issue. I like, you know, it seems to me that, you know, you know, we're going to have to get a lot more people on the bus, and the bus is going to have to be a little bit more dependable. And that's the current issue, too. So that's everything.
Thank you.
Real quickly, I just forgot to mention that I live in the View Ridge neighborhood of Everett. Thank you.
What was your name again?
While Boeing is building its electric planes, let's surround them with apartment buildings.
All right, can I, real quick, like, can I have you put your name and address back in there, so we know who is speaking into the microphone? I'm sorry.
This is Pam Kepford, 5621 Rockefeller Avenue, again.
All right. Have we covered everything for folks in terms of comments? Come on up to the podium.
Mary Rollins, again, on 46th Street. I didn't bring it up before, but I would like to see this incorporated into the City of Everett, a food policy council. Food policy councils are an amazing opportunity to look at from pre-seed to end-of-life of everything we grow, including the transportation to get things to our area. It's a huge idea. It was floated in the Capitol, and Christine Bregoire said, "We don't need one more council to deal with." But it was the most important thing she could have voted yes on. She had 98 members of the House and Senate, whatever, all together, voting for it, and she vetoed it. So just something to consider for the City of Everett moving forward and incorporate into the plans for this upcoming thing we're working on.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, I think we'll go ahead and move on to item number two. And do we want to take a break? Does anybody need water, or anybody need to? Okay, we'll go ahead and move along. Item number two, Vision 2050, and I think Alan will be taking this one away.
I will, but I think Jeff was going to do something with the computer here to get me started.
Thanks, everyone. That was great. Appreciate you guys coming out. Thank you for having us. But I did hear the NPR report today, too.
Well, good evening. Alan Giffen, Planning Director, and I put a cover memo on some information that I pulled off of the PSRC website, just a brief introduction overview of the Vision 2050 document for you. And I've got a few points to share with you tonight, and I'll explain to you as we go why some of these things are important to work that we'll be doing in the future. So first of all, what is the PSRC? The Puget Sound Regional Council is, under federal law, the metropolitan planning organization that is responsible for distributing federal transportation dollars to projects and jurisdictions and programs within our four-county region. That four-county region, King, Kitsap, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties. And under state law, PSRC is the RTPO, the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and that's important because under the Growth Management Act, they are responsible for establishing multi-county planning policies, which I will explain a little bit more about in just a moment. What is Vision 2050 and what are MPPs, multi-county planning policies? Well, Vision 2040 is the current long-range regional growth plan for the four-county region. It talks about developing compactly within confined urban growth areas, preventing urban sprawl, and connecting regional growth centers through a robust multimodal transportation system. Vision 2050 will amend this current plan by extending the planning horizon out another 10 years, and amending the multi-county planning policies, and updating the strategy for where and how the region will grow. The multi-county planning policies are where the growth targets originate within the four-county region that come out to each county, and then through a countywide process are distributed amongst different cities. That's something that is going to be really important for us when we update our comprehensive plan, and I'll talk about that in just a moment here. The multi-county planning policies are, deal with a lot of different subjects that we must all address in countywide planning policies, which then are translated into the policies that we have to put into our local comprehensive plans for a lot of subjects, including transportation, economic development, housing, development patterns, and a lot of other very detailed, well, here's a list. And so I won't read that to you, but you can see that climate change is one of the items on the list in the policy section of the Vision 20 multi-county planning policies. That's something that has been kind of scattered about in different policy sections, but they, through the public process, have heard that it's important enough to give it its own element instead of having it kind of scattered amongst different policy sections of the plan. The current Vision 2040 was adopted in 2008. A lot of things have changed since 2008. At that time, it was being adopted, it was really before the recession hit full force, and so much has really, from the recession, has changed the way that we develop around here, the way that we travel, the way that we build, and between the impacts of the Great Recession and some other changes, such as the whole Amazon phenomenon, where how we shop really has had an impact on land use in terms of how we used to plan for providing services and retail land, and just some of the assumptions we used to use in planning how much land we needed for different types of uses. Since 2008, we've also had two successful votes for Sound Transit 2 and Sound Transit 3, that'll bring the light rail ultimately up to Everett, approved by the voters. We've seen just tremendous housing affordability challenges, and mentioned the, we've talked about all night, the climate change concerns have really heightened within the region and the country, and what to do about that. So extending, this is going to be my wonky planner slide here about timelines under GMA, so these days are going to get a little bit confusing, perhaps. The current regional plan horizon is 2040. However, under GMA, our current comprehensive plan, we plan in 20-year horizons. Our last plan was adopted in 2015, so we've got growth targets out to 2035. Every eight years, we have to update our comprehensive plan under GMA, so that means the next update will happen in 2023, and we'll extend it out another 20 years beyond that to the year 2043. And so the current regional plan only goes out to 2040, and so we needed to have growth targets for further beyond that milestone. And so PSRC wanted to move it out to 2050. So when we adopt our next comprehensive plan update in 2023, we're going to have to take those 2050 numbers and kind of extrapolate or interpolate where we're going to be in 2043 for growth targets. And we're going to talk a lot about that in the future, not tonight, about growth targets as we move our way forward with our countywide planning policies and comp plan in the next few years. So the priorities for Vision 2050 for how we grow in the region in the future is to, I won't read all of these to you, they're pretty understandable, but it kind of builds on the current regional framework to concentrate growth into urban centers and provide a high level of vulnerability, multimodal forms, different than, or more multimodal, greater mode split than we currently have today under existing conditions. Sustain a strong economy, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and a few others here. Very important is restoring the health of the Puget Sound. That's a big challenge. PSRC has prepared a regional open space plan, and that's going to be something that, as a region, probably going to be easier to do than with a metropolitan center like Everett, where we're a built-out community and not a lot of open space without having to buy land and perhaps tear buildings down to create open space. But as a region, the areas that are important, really more on a resource level, would be the agricultural lands, forest lands, and rural areas that really form kind of a more of a regional open space system. So the regional growth strategy, where and how to grow, again, there's a very strong policy to maintain stable urban growth areas. That's not to say that urban growth area boundaries can't expand. They can, but there's a pretty strong policy to look at those very rigidly, I would say, before we make expansions of urban growth areas, because based on a lot of what you've heard earlier tonight, in order to curtail some of the environmental effects of sprawl, we need to develop more densely within urban centers and serve these urban areas with an efficient multimodal transportation system, and that really emphasized even more under Vision 2050. But nevertheless, there's a wide variety of community types within our region, and Vision 2040 recognizes that, and so a community like Snohomish or Darrington are expected to be different than a community like Linwood or Everett or Marysville, and so that is reinforced by the plan. And one of the things that's important and a real challenge, transportation-wise, but strategy, would be to have a better balance between where jobs and housing are located across the region, so that we're not spending so much time commuting. So I've covered a lot of this. I won't, I won't repeat that. But I want to talk a little bit about the regional geographies under the Vision 2040 system. And so what we have, this map shows the, basically Snohomish County, the western part of Snohomish County, and you have some different colors. of Snohomish County, and you have some different colors on the map. And you can see Everett there is labeled the Metropolitan City, it's the largest city within Snohomish County, and is expected to take a larger proportion of growth within the county than the other geographies there. Now, you've got some core cities there, and you can see the two, or three black dots on the map. One is downtown Everett, Metro Everett, one is in Linwood, and one is in the Bothell Canyon Park area. So those three cities are, do have regional growth centers designated by the PSRC within those three communities, and therefore, that's how their system of geography works. The Metropolitan City and the core cities are expected to experience a greater share of growth, particularly a mix of both jobs and housing. You can see the color that seems prevalent on there, kind of a Dijon mustard color, the HCT Communities designation, and that is something that applies to a number of communities. I've got a different slide in a moment that'll explain that. But then, you can see some lighter yellow colors, Stanwood, Granite Falls, Lake Stephens, Snohomish Monroe, Selton, even down at the south end of the county, Briar and Woodware, referred to as cities and towns, they're not expected to grow nearly as much, although you could probably get argument from Lake Stephens that they're growing more than Everett, at least recently. But the regional, excuse me, the high-capacity trans, well, I'll get to that, I forgot about this slide. The overall growth projections for the region between 2017 and 2050 would be 1.8 million population, 1.2 million jobs. For Snohomish County, that would be about over 400,000 in population and over 200, about 225,000 new jobs. For Everett, its share of that previous bullet point there would be 87,000 more population and even more jobs, 89,000 more jobs in Everett between 2017 and 2050. The core cities, Linwood and Bothell, you can see a smaller share of growth. Now, the HCT Communities, you can see a big number there with population, and a job gain number that is also double what you see for the core cities, and the smaller cities and towns that I just mentioned, not so much growth. But these HCT Communities are the ones here, Arlington, Marysville, McCulteau, Mill Creek, Edmonds, Mount Lake Terrace, and the unincorporated areas within the southwest Snohomish County urban growth area. There are a lot of unincorporated areas that surround, like Mill Creek, on all four sides, that the reason they're called high-capacity transit communities is that they're served, or will be served, by either light rail or bus rapid transit by the time we get out to 2036, at least when light rail gets here. And you can see on the map there, the blue dots, high-capacity transit station areas. Larger dots represent light rail, the smaller dots are the bus rapid transit stations. You can see them on Highway 99, Highway 527, the Airport Road, 128th Street corridor, and ultimately up to Marysville and Arlington to the north. All systems that are planned, not all of them are built yet, but that's going to be kind of the emphasis for growth in the future is around the high-capacity transit investment. And so, all of these dots there will presumably have a mix of land uses around them, some more than others, and so that's kind of the regional growth strategy around the, developing around the high transit service areas. So for Everett's growth targets, and I bumped this up from 2017 to 2019 because we want to take credit for the 2,000 additional population that we've grown since then. So that means from 2019 out to 2050, well, before I go down to the bottom there, let's just look across the top line there. 2019 population and job levels, you can see there, 112,000 population, 105,000 jobs. Our growth targets for 2035, for which we do have the capacity in our existing plans, 165,000 population, 140,000 jobs. And between 2035 and 2050, we grow a whole lot more in jobs than we do in population. It's like 32,000 more people, but 54,000 more jobs in that timeframe. And so, between now, 2019 and 2050, it's like growing a whole new city here, 85,000 more people, 89,000 more jobs. That's a lot of growth, and at this point, we don't have the capacity under our current land use plans to meet those 2050 targets, so we're going to have to figure out where to put additional jobs and housing capacity in our next comprehensive plan update. So over the last 19 years, 18 years, we've been averaging a little under 1,100 people per year in our actual growth rate. Our 2035 growth target is 165,000, as I mentioned, we're at 112,000 today. In order to hit that growth target by 2035, we'd have to more than double the rate at which we're growing today, and this is in a community that doesn't have a lot of vacant land, and so most of our development, practically all of it, will have to be redevelopment, where we're tearing something down and putting something in its place, or, you know, things that are now low-intensity, like parking lots will be home to five- or 10-story buildings, which will do a lot to create more of that mixed-use environment that is good for getting people into transit. But for 197,000 people in our 2050 timeframe, we would have to grow just between now and 2050 at a rate that's even higher than our current growth targets, and so that's a big challenge. 2,700 more people per year would equate to roughly 1,400 dwelling units. On our good years, we, in the last couple of decades, on our good years, we might see about 700 dwelling units in a year, and so obviously, we're going to have to pick up the pace here. And how do we do that when, you know, we don't control who builds and when? We just have to provide the capacity and the infrastructure for allowing that to occur, but the market forces are really what determine where things get built. One of the reasons that we expect this to change a bit is that the urban growth areas within Snohomish County are getting pretty full, even though they have capacity up to 2035. I think in Snohomish County, my planner friends over there have said that between the vested applications that they've received just in the, since 2015, they've used up the majority of that capacity that they planned for in 2015 going out to 2035. So they're going to be bumping up against the edge of the urban growth area, and it's going to force development to look into redevelopment in areas like Everett, like Linwood, like other areas where you have the high-capacity transit investments. So we expect between the light rail, that'll create a lot of market demand for high-density housing, once that gets here, or, as Linwood is experiencing, you know, five years before it opens in Linwood, we're already seeing a lot of speculation in high-density plans for development around Linwood, and so we expect maybe some of that'll occur even before we get the light rail here. But that's really just kind of a preview of some of the work that we're going to have to be doing in the near future. Vision 2050 should be adopted in spring by the PSRC. We will have to update our countywide planning policies in 2021, and that's where we establish those preliminary growth targets for the county, all the cities and the county, and then we have to adopt updated comprehensive plans by 20, middle of 2023, and provide for that capacity in each of our plans out to 2043. So in our draft letter to the PSRC, that we're going to talk to the planning, or, excuse me, the City Council about tomorrow night, we're recommending that support of the preferred alternative, which is transit-focused growth rather than a more dispersed land use pattern, commenting that the growth targets are, have been, and will be, continue to be a real challenge for us, just given the realities of the real estate market here in Everett and Snohomish County. And providing for the capital facilities and the services is a real challenge for us because of just the revenue limitations under our current tax system here in the state of Washington, where we're limited to 1% increase in the overall property taxes per year, and rev, or, excuse me, operating costs are growing much faster than 1%. And so, without some changes in state law, and that's one of the comments in the letter from, proposed to be from the mayor, is that without some changes to how cities and county governments are funded, it's going to make realizing that vision even more difficult. We do need to coordinate regional transportation investment to support the regional growth strategy, sound transit is a big piece of that. State DOT is interesting in that they're not bound by local comprehensive plans, and they're, they don't have the revenue to do a whole lot more than just, aside from the transportation packages that have been approved by the voters, they don't have a whole lot of money to do anything more than maintenance. They're not, they don't have really the revenues to expand a lot of capacity and widen the highways, other than the transportation packages that have been funded, and so that's a real challenge, just because they handle a lot of the regional transportation on state highways throughout the region. We have stated support for a regional housing needs assessment, which the PSRC is going to help all of the four counties and cities prepare, and also a comment about a need for the state's annexation statutes to be updated. We've got this assumption under GMA that urban areas should be municipal, the growth should be in cities rather than unincorporated areas, but it is extremely difficult to get annexation to occur for a variety of reasons. In some reasons, or in some cases, it's because the communities are happy being where they are unincorporated. There's always a fear of change. Are my taxes going to go up? Will my land uses change if I get annexed to a city? Or, but the process to annex land into cities is really cumbersome, and it is just not attractive for cities to take on some urban areas because, again, that revenue challenge. We take on more residential areas, more demand for services, but not the revenues to provide the services that people are demanding. So that's a quick overview of why Vision 2050 is important to us, and some of the work that we're going to be doing in the next few years, and as the Commission will be bringing some of this stuff forward, and some of the other things that we're working on with you this year. So if you have any questions for me, happy to take those.
After you.
Are you sure?
Yeah, go for it.[1395.52][1395.52](Laughter).
Would you go back to the HCT population slide? One more.
Get all my arrows out of the way.
Yeah, that's great. So I'm looking at the HCT population gain versus the job gain relative to the Everett population job gain. Why are we getting, and I'm not complaining about the job gain, but why are we getting a smaller component of the population gain despite the greater job gain?
Well, the, and it'd probably be better for me to have about an hour conversation with you sometime offline, I'd happy to do that, you know, probably don't have the time tonight, but the vision growth assumptions, they are, at least in, it's a little bit different for each metropolitan city within each county, but for Everett, the assumption is that 20% of the population growth in Snohomish County will go into the Metropolitan City, Everett, and that 39% of the job growth within that timeframe will go into Everett. And so they've made some assumptions, and I can't tell you that I can explain exactly how and why they came up with those numbers, but that is the, how they came, how they came up with the numbers for Everett was the assumption about percentage of growth that will occur in these different categories of geography, and that's based upon a lot of different factors, but I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, I mean, it in part answers my question. I guess what I'm wondering is, is it driven by demand for certain kinds of housing types, where a large percentage of the demand will seek non-urban dwelling units? Or is it based on kind of historical trends because there has been so much growth in these HCT communities, you know, recently? I mean, look at the Seattle Times this morning. Are people choosing to locate elsewhere for other reasons? Is it more attractive to them, not just housing types, but community profile? I'm just, it strikes me that there's an offset there, given the conversation we just had in item one about reducing greenhouse gas emissions. It would be great if people wanted to actually live where they could work.
No, it's, it's challenging to understand. You know, I think a lot of it just has to do with the economics, where people can afford to live based upon where they work or the type of work that they do. And so, if you're going to be working in King County, you can live more affordably in Snohomish County or Pierce County.
Sure.
But that means you've got a lot of driving to do or buses to catch, and so a lot of the population growth is driven by, in these assumptions, by the investment in these high-capacity transit systems, so the BRT and the light rail. Notice that some of the high-capacity transit communities are like Marysville and Arlington, that's not going to be light rail in that timeframe, that's going to be bus rapid transit. But if you look at the unincorporated areas south of Everett, at 128th Street, at 164th Street, you're going to have two light rail stations there, and those are expected to be very attractive for people who work in Seattle and can, who can live more affordably in Snohomish County, to be able to hop on a train and get to their job in King County. And so, a lot of growth is projected to occur around the transportation investment for that reason.
Sure. Thanks.
Birds, I know.[1647.02][1647.02](Laughter). I just, so we're looking at our, the population growth. If you want to go like move, I think, two slides ahead, we were talking about year over year, and what numbers we have to get per year, if I were, don't know how far ahead it is. Ah, yeah. The targets we need to hit, 2,700, but, I mean, I'm guessing it won't come in a smooth ramping-up pace. It'll come much like what we're seeing in Linwood. You'll see not much, and all of a sudden, five years prior to the light rail, you'll see an explosion of construction, so it'll be a challenge for us to hit it, and then all of a sudden, we'll have a new set of challenges, because it'll be not 20, it could not be 2,700, but it could be 5,000, you know, units of people moving to the area. And so, what conversations are going into making sure that we continue to preserve housing affordability, which is already an existing challenge, but will be a more acute challenge when we have this compression of growth coming, you know, within the building horizon or the completion horizon of light rail stations? You know, what kind of conversations are we talking about in policy tools, not just within land use, but within broader policy tools and conversations are we talking about to make sure that there is, that we can accommodate that, you know, immense growth in a constrained period of time? Is the question clear? Am I?
How do we provide for affordable housing? That's kind of the question I'm getting.
Well, part of it, but, you know, that is part of it, but, you know, like what else are we, what else are we doing to make sure that we are, because that growth is going to be compressed, I would argue. Like, we won't see the growth evenly distributed year over year. It's going to be not much, not enough, not enough, till it's too much, and how do we, like what conversations are being had with how to deal with that? And one of the reasons, one of the, there's a lot of ways it will impact our region, but one way I'm particularly interested in is affordable housing, so.
Yeah, and I don't have the answers for you tonight. I mean, those are things that we're going to have to address in the comprehensive plan update, and some of the work that we're doing with Rethink Zoning and the housing strategy are part of that. There are efforts going on from the legislature all the way down to local levels on all of the ways that we can increase the production of housing, increase the affordability of housing, which may or may not be possible. housing, which may or may not be possible. It's such a challenge, especially when you have that rapid growth, then that puts a really inflationary push on the cost of everything when you've got that kind of demand. The contractors and construction materials all get more costly and it's, you can't build it cheaply. There's just no way to build it affordably. So, if you're looking at some of the lower household income levels, you know, the 30% to 50% of area median income, that's going to require some fairly deep subsidies, 50% to 80%, probably some subsidy, get closer to 80%. At least in Everett, that's been kind of the, at the market, what market rate has been able to provide for. How that changes in the future, it, just, we'll have to wait and see on that one, but it's, yeah, definitely a challenge. I mean, we've, when you've got a constrained amount of land, and I think it was one of our local citizens who came up with the observation a few years ago when we were talking about this, he says, "If you don't want sprawl, you gotta go tall." And that, kind of a Johnny Cochranism, but the...
It rhymes, so it has to be true.
And so, but the cost of going, you know, tall, going above the, what you see being built right now in Broadway, five stories of wood frame construction, that's about as, that's not cheap. But to go taller, you have, it gets a lot more costly because then your building code changes. Maybe the cross-laminated timber, the hope for creating some building materials that not only are environmentally superior, but would have a lot more cost-effective ways of being, providing the density will, will be common. And right now, those things have to get through state building code councils, and that's the major hurdle to seeing that type of construction become commonplace.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the feedback. I just, well, the biggest, the biggest thing I want to do is just put a pin in it, like we know this, this cost spike from the, like, the concentration of, you know, growth is coming, so, you know, there's, makes sense for us to start planning for that eventuality as well.
You know, some of the things that you see at the, in communities that have become more urbanized is, and have better transit service, they, somebody mentioned tonight the elimination of single-family zoning in some communities. Some have mentioned, or you'll see that some communities are just eliminating any minimum off-street parking requirement. You know, we did cut ours down in metro area with our plan update. We didn't think it was time yet to go all the way to, you know, zero minimum parking requirement, but, you know, those are the types of things that when you've got an alternative like a great transit service that can contribute to affordability, because if you're having to provide a lot of structured parking for those, all of those apartment units, then that drives up, the more parking you require, the more costly it is to build that.
So, it stands to reason then if we have a robust transit system in place, it makes it easier for us to justify reduced parking minimums prior to this construction and then start to ameliorate the cost of that preemptively then by investing in good reliable transit prior to this.
That's, that's one strategy, yes.
All right.
Commissioner Zelensky.
Alan, it might be worth pushing back a little on the regional council on the growth numbers. I mean, the next vision, Vision 2060 is going to be coming out before light rail gets here.
Right.
Why not push back a little bit and say, you know, those numbers are pretty telling, you know? Our actual growth rate's about 1,100 in terms of population per year, and we don't think 2,400 or 2,700 is realistic at all. Maybe take a midpoint between those two numbers. Say, this is still a very aggressive target, and we're committed to trying our best to make it, but let's not be self-deceptive about this. We're not going to get to those kind of numbers. Let's talk again when 2060 comes out, and we're getting closer to light rail at that point.
That's a great comment, and that's one of the comments in our letter.
Alan, does the city, does the city ever have a representative on the council?
Yes.
Who is it?
For the Growth Management Policy Board, it's Councilmember Bader. On the Transportation Policy Board, it's Councilmember Roberts. On the Executive Board, it's Mayor Franklin. And so, yeah, they, they're all, you know, very active in these discussions, but it's interesting, you know, when I try to say what Mike just, Councilmember Zelensky, excuse me, Commissioner Zelensky just mentioned, and I've been saying that for a long time, back before the 2040 was adopted, it fell on deaf ears, honestly, in 2008. This, a time around, the Regional Council staff is much more responsive to the comments that we have made, both from the City of Everett and from Snohomish County tomorrow through that forum, and they have been a lot more willing to accommodate some of our comments and suggestions and policy changes. And so, it's been a much better process this time than before, but the numbers are still just hard to, hard to imagine.
I actually have a quick question to dovetail along Commissioner Zelensky's. So, as part of the PSRC planning process, I'm sure they're kind of going back and looking at the trends and what they have done in terms of Pierce County as well as King County to determine their growth targets. Did we actually do this? My understanding is that they haven't, those growth targets were overly ambitious. While there has been growth, they were ambitious there as well. So, is there ways to leverage lessons learned through other communities that were supposed to grow?
Well, at the regional level, the numbers haven't been very far off. It's at the local level where one community might have exceeded its, its growth targets, you know, by double, you know? Smaller communities where things are more affordable and people have to drive a long way to get to them, kind of in the antithesis of the regional growth strategy. And so, the Regional Council is, you know, they had some hard conversations when it came with the last round of conference of plan updates where they were not certifying some of the local plans because their capacity was greater than they were supposed to grow. Whereas, we had cities like Everett and Tacoma that were supposed to take on a greater share of the region's growth that weren't hitting those targets. And under GMA, we're only required to provide the capacity. We're not required to hit a target. That's some of the conversation that we've heard a lot of just, you know, since 2008 when they first adopted Vision 2040 and around the state when people were talking about housing affordability, they were saying, "You gotta hold cities accountable for hitting their growth targets." I don't know how you do that when the cities aren't the ones that build the housing. You know, it's, it's a complicated, it's a complicated equation as to how housing gets built, but, you know, if we, what are they going to do? Not fund our infrastructure so that it makes it even harder for us to accommodate growth? I mean, is that the penalty that we're going to see or the consequence for not hitting growth targets? I don't know what accountability means in that, in that context.
I just kind of have an open question to both, to the commission, you are all experts, and to staff as well. I mean, what kind of message does it send or what kind of impacts? Or has there been a, you know, city that has adjusted down its growth targets and fought for that growth targets? And what have been, what has been the impact? What are my, what are my underlying theoretical, like, baselines is that Everett is better served by being a bigger city? But when we send the message that we don't want to meet these numbers, that we can't meet these numbers, that we're not interested, like, what's the impact? Has that happened? Who knows? What's, like, I'm, like, has, who, has anyone seen that or?
Well, there aren't a lot of places where you have actual growth targets across the country. This is one area, you know, probably, it was Vision 2020, which existed up until 2008, had a regional growth strategy, but there were no, there were no targets. And as a region, every, every city had targets under GMA, but, you know, they were basically paper targets. These are made to be a little bit more serious, although, again, you can't really make a city grow just by expressing an aspiration that they grow to a certain level. And so, I think the, the message that we've been sending to the Regional Council is that we're willing to take on these numbers. It's going to take a lot of help, though, in terms of infrastructure investment and economic development strategies for us to grow in a way that's positive for our community. We don't want to just rezone every single-family neighborhood to allow for, you know, high-rise or, you know, higher density. We've got neighborhoods that are very stable. We've got a very low in terms of the region, low rate of home ownership, owner occupancy in the City of Everett. And so, it's important for stability of the community to maintain some degree of home ownership, but most of our housing in the future is going to be rental. It's going to be multifamily, and it's going to have to be in areas that can be served by high-capacity transit or very frequent local transit service. And until we see how the condominium liability reform works, most of that's still going to be rental housing. If we're lucky, we'll see condominiums come back and, without the lawsuits.
Commissioner Tisdale.
I think what you could do, Alex, is look at the since the inception of the Growth Management Act, and I support the Growth Management Act, but it's caused people to drive till they can afford, whether that's an apartment or a mobile home or a single-family home, and I don't see that changing because we're all, we all make X amount of dollars and X amount goes for housing. I mean, it'd be nice if that changes, but I think that's one trend that you could look at and, and see that's happening. And I think what Alan just spoke about is a good example of, of that. And you look at cities like Gold Bar that's going to have 750 new residences, well, you can, you can drive a little and save a lot, you know? There, it's, and it's the market. All this planning is good and it's important, but it doesn't matter which jurisdiction you go to, the markets, what, I mean, Michael can probably speak to that better than anybody, but...
Well, I think that, you know, it's not so much the, I think that affordability is a multi-dimensional concept that I think we too often flatten. It's not about just dollars. It's about a variety of amenities and value that one perceives from the money they're spending. And so, I think that, you know, you look at Everett specifically, and we think about market forces, how do we make Everett more attractive so the utility bang for the buck is there to trade in a housing type that is six to nine dwelling units per acre for a housing type that is 170 to 190 dwelling units per acre? Right? So, how do you change that dynamic? So, the things you're getting in a certain location don't justify going any further out, you know? Promote staying here and living more densely. I do think that, you know, from a density perspective, most of the units we build in the future will be for rent until there's significant condo reform, but I also think that many of the single-family homes that remain in these lower-density neighborhoods will convert to more owner occupied because it won't make any economic sense to rent them out anymore because they'll be more valuable. So, I think we need to work on how do we make Everett more attractive so we draw that demand, justify the cost of development, and meet those goals.
And not just for the residences, but also for the businesses.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, we have a large footprint right here in Everett of Amazon, Google, Facebook. I mean, those, those people live here and work there. You know, we need to be banging on their doors down there at Google headquarters and saying, "Do you realize that you got 2,000 people living Everett? What about a mini office or your next, you know, your, your next increase in office space? Let's, let's do something." But it's a market. It's, Alan, the other question I had is, I didn't see anything in the information that you showed about the Buildable Land Study.
Right.
And I think there's a, again, I believe in the GMA, but I think there's a disconnect with the PSRC and the Buildable Lands study, not just in Everett, but in all the jurisdictions, and how are they dealing with that?
Well, the Buildable Lands is mandated by Buildable Lands Report, as mandated under the Growth Management Act, although they don't use those terms. That's a euphemism for the process, but that is something that is, we're going to be getting into here. In fact, through Snohomish County, we've, and Snohomish County tomorrow, we funded some planners that are working on that with Snohomish County to come up with, you know, good analysis of the amount of developable land and make some, you know, is redevelopment, some of it's vacant, some of it will be partially developed, and so, the, that information is used to determine what your capacity is for growth in your community. And so, that work is underway, and we're going to, we'll be updating you as, as that work continues when it's time. Right now, they're just collecting the data, but the reports are done about every five years, and the, I guess the criticism I've heard about Buildable Lands is that, and this is particularly true for the single-family home builders within the region, is that for their product type, there's not a lot of land out there within the urban growth area, not enough probably to satisfy the demand that they could build and sell homes for. And to build the number of single-family detached homes that they could sell would probably require an expansion to the urban growth area boundary. But then, we're doing the same thing that GMA was set up to stop, which was the sprawl and the, you know, the things we're talking about earlier tonight. And so, that really changes the whole character of where we were in the late 80s when GMA was conceived and 1990 when it was passed. The amount of developable urban land that we now have is very constrained, and so, again, that if you don't want a sprawl, you gotta go tall, is the mode that we're in in Everett and a lot of other cities are going to find themselves in that haven't been there before.
I was just, leading up to, I mean, maybe that's part of the information that is used, and I'm not talking about single-family, I'm talking about housing and even here in the city, just the setbacks went from 50 feet to 75 feet to 100 feet to 150 feet.
On wetland buffers.
Yeah, and steep slopes and all those things that have, have came into play, and I'm not saying they're good or bad, but that have, and, and that's thwarted when you, when you look at the Buildable Lands, again, out, just take outside of single-family residences. I mean, I, I don't know if they know our geographical, you know, Everett is not perfectly flat and those things, so there's, there's some of those things that might help you educate them on our ability to grow.
You know, they're, PSRC is very well aware of our topography and our lot patterns. I mean, they've got a lot of our GIS information. It's not a surprise, it's not like this is the great Wild West out here. I mean, they, they understand that, it's just that the whole paradigm from the late 80s to where we are today has changed in terms of what is expected and to, you know, have growth contained within fairly tight urban growth area boundaries.
Thank you.
I think we're starting to push up against, I...
I'm done.
Push up against a time limit unless we want to extend. Does anybody else have questions or thoughts or concerns for Alan? All right, well, with that, we're done, too. Thank you.